Hello, welcome to our June Youth City Council meeting. Today is August 28th of 2025. It is now 6:00 PM. If we could please start with roll.
Wellington?
Present.
Holtz?
Mosley?
Present.
Lemunyan?
Present.
Mosley?
Present.
Let us please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please have Reverend Michael Jobe for the prayer.
Let's bow our heads. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather this evening. Father God, we ask and pray that you be upon this Youth City Council, heavenly Father, and those in which that's supported. Father God, protect those in which there's civic duties, oh heavenly Father, and let your work always go forth. These are many blessings we ask and pray, in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Hello, my name is Kayla Wellington. Thank you for everyone that is in person and live for always supporting us. If we could go to the next item, please.
Item two, petitions and communications. Oral communications from the audience. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda.
This next part of our meeting is for anyone in the room that would like to come speak to the council, may come up to the podium. Again, please limit your remarks to five minutes or less and items not on the agenda.
Hello, council. I appreciate you guys taking the time out of your evening to come down and do this. I wanted to share with you an event that's coming up. You guys there with you all have invitations to the event, and I wanted to share a little bit with you about it and answer any questions you might have. Wisdom in Motion is hosting a Career Readiness and Entrepreneurship kickoff event. It's for the career readiness and entrepreneurship portion of our program. It's a 12-month program for kids, high school age 14 through 17. The first six months of the program, the kids come in, they get paired with a mentor that will help them work towards a career path or career exploration. They work on resume writing, they work on interview skills, presentation. They do some career testing to kind of see what fields they might be interested in or what would be a good fit for them and their personality and their skill set. The second half of the 12-month program is the entrepreneurship piece of our program. That piece focuses on the kids that are thinking of taking a more entrepreneurship route, or at least learning about it and exploring the options. So they learn how to write a business plan, they learn how to actually pitch it to local investors. They would have the opportunity to shadow local business owners. And there's also some area that allows for like a stipend for a, what's the word I'm looking for? An internship. I lost the word. An internship opportunity as well for those kids. At the end of the 12-month program, the really cool thing about it is it doesn't focus necessarily on a student's past grades. We are concerned in working with kids that either want to or are already on a path to obtain like a high school diploma or their GED. Because at the end of the 12-month program, what students that complete it in its entirety are awarded with $3,500 for a vocational school. We have also partnered with and are working with the College HCC here for any kids that might be interested in a vocational program that exceeds that $3,500 limit. So they will work with us and those students to help find grants or other scholarships to kind of fill that gap. So it's a cool program. Tomorrow's our kickoff night and our sign up. So I just wanted to invite you guys all out and make you aware of it and see if you guys have any questions.
So my question is, can anyone come out to this event? Or is it just certain people? What's the main target audience?
Right, great question. So anybody can come out. It's actually like most events that we do that's family-centered. We'll have a couple of guest speakers. Actually, John Richardson from City Council will be one of our guest speakers because he's not only a city council member, he's also a local business owner. He owns a construction company, Richardson Brothers. So he'll be sharing kind of that experience that he's been on. And then we have another guest speaker, Latonya Ross. And Latonya, she's been a youth advocate for years. She works primarily with kids that have been either at risk or through some sort of trauma, but she's a huge advocate for youth in general and promoting youth and their wellness. So and then we'll have some fajitas prepared. Fajitas, fajitas. So we'll have dinner. And then the kids will learn about the programs and have the opportunity to sign up.
Um, oh, sorry, you can go.
I'm actually a part of this program. And from experience, I've really liked it. All the meetings that we've had are really fun. And I met a lot of new people. It's been really nice.
Good, I'm glad you enjoyed it. So yeah, Maddie does our future legacy leader portion of the program. You are welcome to also enter into Career Readiness and Entrepreneurship. We can discuss that if that's something that you're interested in. But she's been in that program for a while, and it focuses on leadership, community service, understanding your value and your self-worth. So she's been part of that for a while now.
Um, my question is, for anyone that's in person or online, if they won't have any questions about this, is there somewhere where they can contact you?
Yes, so they can go to our Facebook page. Our Facebook page is just Wisdom in Motion. They can check out our website, Those are probably the easiest ways to contact us. You can call us. Our number is 620-960-9092. But Facebook, website, those are probably the simplest.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you so much.
And I would like to add that you'll be hearing also from our wonderful career readiness specialist and our entrepreneurship specialist, our directors.
Yes, so they will be there to present their portions of the program and give a more detailed overview of what the youth can expect if they sign up for the program. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, next item, please.
Item three A, USC 308 presentation. Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting us over here to talk about the USD 308 bond. Let me see if I can use, perfect. So a bond, how many of you know what a bond is? I'm not an expert either, but I think that the easiest way for me to explain it is a bond is a loan for a big project, like a mortgage for a school. It's used for building upgrades or major repairs. A mill levy is the property tax. One mill is one one thousandth of the property value. Local communities then vote to either raise or lower it to pay for the bond. Together, bonds and mill levies are how we can build and fix schools. How do you define an organization as large and diverse as USD 308? One that reflects the unique stories, strengths, and needs of every student and every staff member. That was the challenge that the Board of Education took in 2022. Yet the process for where they are today began even before then. It began with the HUSAC Committee that was first formed to assist with the challenges of COVID and ended with discussions about the future of USD 308. Then, the Board of Education that exists today set out to take the work from the HUSAC Committee a step further. In January of 2023, a 50-person Community Facility Steering Committee was formed. After 18 months of steering committee work, we set out to test the ideas and get feedback from the community in the spring of 2024. This past summer, we transitioned from a steering committee to a community bond campaign committee and the work that we will do over the next 12 weeks. That work began three years ago. This month will culminate in a vote on November 4th. The work that began three years ago was not just about facilities for the Board of Education. It was about mission and vision and core values, as well as a strategic plan to make USD 308 even greater. After thoughtful conversations, listening, and reflection, they arrived at the mission and vision that guides the school district today. The mission is educating and empowering every Salt Hawk for life and the vision, today's students prepared for tomorrow's world. The USD 308 alumni are proof that they are achieving that vision. Here is a quick snapshot of the strategic plan that the Board of Education asked administrators to focus on back in June of 2023. Essentially, 22 goals in the area of resources, early childhood learning, and student achievement. They measured their progress in December of 2024 and again in July 2025. As you can see in that time, they have increased the green or achieved the objective and reduced the red, the have-not-started objective. Areas where they have made strides. Increased teacher pay to be the best in Reno County and compete with larger schools outside of our county with the starting base salary of $49,500. Increased classified pay from $10 an hour to $15.75 an hour, ensuring that all schools have safety and security measures. Creating a position within USD 308 to focus on early childhood education, increasing the capacity for childcare. That work is actually already being done now at the corner of 29th and Adams, behind Morgan Elementary. The goal is to open the Little Hawks Childcare Center in January of 2026. They increased their graduation rate from 86% to 92%. They also reduced chronic absenteeism throughout the district from 30% down to 18% and increased the number of students in third grade performing at levels two, three, and four on the state reading assessment. They are waiting for last year's assessment data to be released sometime this fall. Then, of course, in the bottom right-hand corner, they have a strong culture that they operate from every day. Where they are committed to a vibrant and inclusive culture that nurtures a love for learning, fosters academic growth, and embraces the diverse strengths of students, staff, families, and the community. Their daily commitment to educate the children in this community is shaped by four core values: perseverance, compassion, integrity, and innovation. Together, these values reflect who they are, what they believe, and where they are headed. Simultaneously, while they tackled a strategic plan to propel the district forward, the Community Facility Steering Committee was engaged in asking a simple but powerful question: What if? What if we dared to dream big and invited the community to dream with us? What if we listened closely, not just to families, but to staff and students too? And let their hopes and ideas guide the way? What if we made the path to student success clearer, stronger, and more connected? And brought parents along every step of the journey? So, we did what good leaders often do, and we formed a committee. We didn't start from scratch, and we picked up where the HUSAC Committee left off, building on the strong foundation that they laid. Their work helped us shape clear goals for the facilities committee, focused, intentional, and grounded in what our schools need most. We stayed future-focused. With students and staff at the center of every conversation, two clear priorities rose to the top: to strengthen and simplify the early learning and improve the middle school experience in both the transitions and the physical and cultural environment. Solution number one was one dedicated location for early education. Why settle on a disjointed approach to early learning or settle on limitations to staff collaboration or on community clarity of what great programs USD 308 has to offer? The current setup just isn't working. It's too fragmented. They have eight separate early education sites. Right now, how, when, and where our youngest children enter USD 308 varies too much. Why settle when we can soar toward a vision of streamlining the entrance into early learning and strengthening kindergarten readiness to soar toward increased early and effective interventions? Solution number two was a dedicated location for all sixth through eighth grade students. We asked ourselves, why settle on consecutive transitions year after year on limited student-teacher connections on a cycle of broken relationships between staff and students and parents and teachers? Instead, we saw a vision where collaboration between sixth through eighth grade teachers would increase, where we could build a strong culture toward common goals for middle school students, where we could increase honors classes and technical education classes, provide stronger support systems for students at this critical age of development, and enhance relationships. As the committee continued to meet and dialogue and challenge those ideas, other important projects began to take shape. The high school soared toward excellence in 2006 with a remodel and addition of the CTEA building. The steering committee wanted to create the same excellence for middle school and for elementary schools. Many elementary buildings are ready for some well-deserved attention. The committee, along with many in our community, created a thoughtful list for each one. Some will see an additional gym to create equity among all elementary schools for lunch and PE classes. And some will receive storm shelters. Others will get much-needed roofs, kitchen upgrades, and classroom enhancements. As the steering committee did its work, we brought those conversations to the community, hosting over 30 events across the city. We showed up anywhere that we could get on the calendar, sharing our vision for the future and asking the community what they would support. Listening to the community feedback and using that data is exactly how the Board of Education landed on the projects and the cost of those projects that will be voted on by residents of Hutchinson on November 4th. The feedback was clear. We were on the right track, with the right ideas at the right time. We worked with a company to conduct random telephone surveys with community members all across the district to ask them what mattered most to them, a process that came with a 95% confidence rating. We held 23 community meetings and seven focus groups, where approximately 700 people were able to listen first to our ideas, understand how we came to choose them, and then tell us their feedback after being informed on the projects and the process. Before we analyzed the data, we said that a 65% favorable rating was where we were comfortable in moving forward with an idea. It only takes 51%. But we said that we were not comfortable unless that feedback on that idea was 65% or more in favor of it. And here is what we discovered. We found that 81% of those that we surveyed were in favor of building a daycare. So the school district started that project immediately and took it out of the bond, saving money for other possibilities. 79% were in favor of a middle school for sixth through eighth graders. 68% were in favor of elementary upgrades and 65% in favor of a pre-K center at one dedicated location. Then we asked about costs. How much would our community be willing to support in a tax increase? That information is what helped the school board know how much that final amount of the bond ask should be. 74% were in favor of supporting a $6 a month increase on a $100,000 house. If the home value was more or less than that, the calculations were made on the phone. 70% were in favor of a project around $100 million. And that percent went down to 63% when we asked about $120 million. Remember, our confidence, our level, our threshold for confidence was 65% or more. The Facility Steering Committee did everything that the board asked them to accomplish. The school board was equipped with information and rich with data. In the summer of 2024, they took all the ideas and data and landed here. A master plan that would cost $109.5 million to create the following: repurpose the first floor of HMS 8 to create a pre-K center at the cost of $4 million; enhancements to six elementary schools costing $15 million; build a new middle school for sixth to eighth grade, $83 million; and 75% of the total budget. Repurposing the second and third floors of HMS 8 to move student services to one location: curriculum, administration, special education, IT, and food service. $5 million for that. And then, for less than 2% of the total budget, relocate the baseball fields and soccer fields at 23rd and Severance, as that is where the new middle school would need placed. We considered all land options available. In the end, USD 308 is a landlocked district of 14 square miles, and this was truly the only land that USD 308 owned that could accommodate such a building. Not even a remodel of HMS 7 or HMS 8 would accommodate a sixth to eighth grade concept. Thanks to state aid, our local taxpayers will only pay 83% of the cost. We asked new questions. How can we make it easier for students to enter school ready to learn, grow, and connect? How can we relieve the pressure in the middle by reducing transitions and building stronger engagement with all stakeholders, students, families, and staff? Curiosity guided us forward. Thirteen months later, the moment has been building, quietly, steadily, and just beneath the surface. You can feel it in the way that people eagerly ask about the bond. That curiosity is there, ready to start a new chapter with a new generation of students. The middle school would have a practice football field on site, eliminating after-school busing. Sixth graders can still be contained while also taking advantage of choir and band and honors class opportunities. The competition soccer field would move to Don Michael Field, next to the high school, and the baseball diamonds would move to Cary Park so that JV and varsity players and parents can all be together. The conversations were real and rooted in logistics. Hundreds of students needing practice space, the smartest use of funds, and how to meet as many needs as possible. Small groups of stakeholders helped guide that way, making sure the plan reflected both vision and practicality. HMS 8 gets repurposed to house pre-K and student services on the second and third floors. USD 308 also aims to right-size their facilities, a goal in their strategic plan: to reduce annual operation costs, maintenance costs, and property insurance. Local businesses, community members, and other local organizations have inquired about these facilities. There is so much interest. There is also a process for taking these buildings offline, and the district is invested in not leaving empty buildings peppered throughout our community. The board is invested in selling property, leasing property, and even demolishing property if necessary to create space for new possibilities. They do not want to create more blight. I am sure that many of you were thinking back on Slide 17 that there's no way that people will vote for $109 million. I'm also guessing, in early 2000, you may have thought the same about the $78 million bond that passed the first time around. In 2006, the $78.8 million bond would equate to $123 million today. So, today's bond is actually less than what was passed back in 2006. Back then, the interest rate on the loan was 4.6%. Today, it is 4.7%. Back in 2006, the district had to raise the bond and interest mill levy eight mils to get the total 22.5 mils needed to fund the project. Today, they are only raising the bond and interest five mils to get the total 20 mils needed to fund the project. This bond is cheaper than it was in 2006. And remember, we listened to the community and their feedback was essential. Raising the bond and interest by five mils will cost a taxpayer who owns a $100,000 house less than $5 a month in additional taxes. When it passes, many may wonder, what happens next? The beauty of the middle school concept is that USD 308 owns the land, so they can get to work right away. Many of the projects will happen at different times and different phases. But the immediate work after the vote is to begin architectural drawings, which takes about 10 months. Then, they will bid out the project to a construction company. About two months after choosing a company, excuse me, construction will begin. Once ground is broken for a new middle school, it will take about 18 months to build. I know many of us were looking forward to this building being in operation in 2027. But remember that the vote was pushed back from April 2025 to November 2025, essentially delaying opening by seven months. Even though staff are still split between HMS 7 and HMS 8, they're already talking about shared spaces, shared traditions, and what it means to come together. And parents, they're excited too, hopeful about what a new middle school experience could mean for their twin or teen and what's possible when culture, connection, and opportunity align. So we've answered the question, why settle? The truth is, it's not who we are, and it's certainly not what we want for our children. We don't ask our children to settle in sports or in the arts or in their dreams. So why would we settle for less in their learning environments? We've done the hard work, the right work, the long hours of listening and problem-solving and planning. We've involved parents, the community, students, and we've sought answers to the questions that we had and used data to seek the solutions. We've faced the challenge head-on and found the best path forward. In Hutchinson, we don't settle, we soar. If this is something that you're interested in, there is a QR code that I can send over. You can follow Vote Yes for Hutch Kids on Facebook, and you can donate to the website PayPal, and I think the others are being set up as well. But I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that all of you have gone through those transitions. And those are some of the hardest transitions from sixth grade to seventh grade, and then a new building in eighth, and then another new building when you start high school. You've all lived them. What would have made those transitions easier for you? If this, again, is something that you're interested in, talk to your friends, talk to your parents, ask if they are registered to vote. Check to see if they're up to date on that. And this is about you. This is about the learning environment for you in the future and your siblings, cousins, friends. The opportunities of the future are here for you, and we just want to make sure that you are all involved and a part of that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Um, I do. So is it just 18 in order to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, like, I didn't know. Sometimes it's different. So I was just double-checking.
You're good.
Well, is there anything else that we could do to help? Like, as a youth?
There, um, so the volunteer form, if you fill it out, you can do door-to-door, which obviously I recommend doing with an adult. I'd be more than happy to go with you too. Handing out flyers. If there's a group of friends that are wanting this presentation, happy to also have that available for them. If you want to pass outdoor signs or the yard signs and t-shirts, they're $10 or $5. And then there's also buttons available that are coming. So if you're interested, that form is on the Vote Yes for Hutch Kids Facebook page. If you fill it out, and then you'll get more information from there. I'm losing my voice, sorry.
You're okay. Perfect.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, well, I'll probably definitely be looking at the, into that.
Me too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment? Oh wait, I have further comment. What am I talking about? Okay, I think that this is a great idea, as, again, as someone that has lived those trans-
Transitions?
Yes, transitions. It is very difficult, you know, you're leaving teachers that you've made, made close connections to, and you don't really know a lot of people o- that are older or younger than you until you get to high school. So I think this will definitely be great for the future of USD three oh eight.
Yes, I-
Oh, sorry.
I think this would be really helpful. I think it would make the transition to grade school to middle school to high school way easier, cuz then you can get cuz in middle school and high school, it's a little different transitioning. But I think with a com- a combination of like three different grades would definitely help a lot, seeing older kids move up and stuff, see how it works. Think it'd be a lot simpler for middle schoolers to feel more comfortable.
I agree with that. Um, it was a lot stressful, a lot more stressful going into like sixth grade and then going into like the big building of seventh grade. Like, there's a bunch of different, like, stairs and teachers, and you're leaving all your memories behind you, kind of. So, I think that this is just a great idea.
Oh, yeah, when I went into middle school, it was like a huge change for me, and, uh, I think like if I were to put myself in kids' shoes that could experience a building like that, um, where they can be combined with the seventh and eighth graders, I think it would definitely make the whole process easier, um, and sixth and eighth gr- like sixth or eighth grade, it's like a good placement because if you think about it, like, it would be way better having sixth graders with the seventh and eighth graders than in the same building as like little, little kids. Because like, we all know sixth graders aren't like the most mature, but I think they would definitely fit in better with the seventh and eighth graders, so I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I feel like the age gap between, uh, kindergarten and sixth grade, there's a lot more changes, and I think it'd be better to have the sixth graders with older kids, so they can like get some help cuz of, you c- you're usually the older one in the school, so it's kind of hard to see like how it, life works outside of grade school.
Yeah, and also you can make those connections early on, especially when you do transition back up to high school. You actually know some familiar faces. And, um, you're not just left, like, you don't know anyone or anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that like during sis- sixth grade, like, yes, you're the like leader of like the school, but like, it's kind of awkward cuz like, you're just like older than everybody, and they're just like so ki- kind of tiny. Like, no offense, but, but they're just like, I don't know, you just like can't make connections with them very much. So like if sixth, seventh, and eighth were together, that, then you can make a lot more connections with people and familiar faces. So when you move up to high school, then, just like KK said, you're a stranger.
With that, any further comments?
Um, I was gonna say, um, I like how you guys were bringing up like how they can form their connections early on and get like insight, and it kind of mi- might even give the little kids more freedom being in their own separate building, so I definitely agree with you guys.
Also, I really like the daycare idea. I know a lot of people struggle to find someone to watch their kids when they go to work, when the kids are not ready to go to preschool or anything, so I think that would be a really, really helpful. Especially for, uh, younger parents who don't really know the resources to go to. And I think the daycare, if it's more open and people know more about it, then I think it'd be really helpful.
Yes, and I love how the school district or school board or committee or whatever. I love how they're reusing buildings and not just trying to find new spots and leave buildings open. They're actually trying to refurbish and reuse all those buildings, so we're not just having random buildings stuck everywhere and, um, yeah.
It's also better for the environment, so we can have more plants and animals and have them feel more comfortable and make it more green in Hutch.
Any further comments? Okay, with that, next item, please.
Item three B, raffle winners from the unhoused drive.
Okay, so we did have an unhoused drive. I, what month was it? I forgot. It was like a couple months.
I believe it was in June.
June?
June or July, right?
July. It was, it was in between the summer runs.
Yeah.
But, um, we did have a raffle, and I've, it, I forgot where the gift cards were from, but I know they're gift cards.
There's, I know there's one fr- from Pizaco's, and I think, right? Yeah.
Okay. But anyway, um, we do have two raffle winners, so would you like to say the first one?
Uh, the first one is John Green.
And then the second one is Elena Lemunyan. So, if you did, if you did win the raffle, um, we will be getting in contact with you and finding out all that stuff. So, just thank you for donating, um, and if you are interested in some raffle tickets, we will probably be doing this again, so stay, stay tuned for that. Any further comments?
Um, uh, yeah, just thank you. It helps the community out a lot.
I really, I really like going to the, the unhoused drives. And there's so many nice people that come. We have really good conversations with everybody. It's just really fun.
Congratulations to the winners. Also, um, maybe next drive, more people can come. Uh, cuz I know it was kind of awkward, and like it was kind of in the middle of the day and people were just getting off of work, so people didn't really want to come, so we'll try to go around the schedule like that. Not like that this year, but, or next year, my bad.
Next time we have an unhoused drive.
Next time we had the unhoused drive, okay? Let's do this, um. Uh, what was I, what was I saying? I lost my train of thought. I don't know. Go ahead.
Um, but yeah, just thank you for everyone that come, that came out, and we will be hosting more like this, so.
I feel like we could do a little better with like getting it out to people, like since schools in session, maybe we can do one during the school time and hang up posters and stuff around our schools, get it out more.
Yes, I agree. We kind of tested out that, um, time-space, and we found that it didn't work as well, so, um, we're gonna take what we did this year and try to improve and make it even better for the next time.
Yeah, um, I think we can definitely like publicize it more this year and publicize it better, or next time we do something like this again. But it's just nice to, uh, see that people care about the community and that they want to help out.
Yes, so thank you for, um, coming out and thank, or congratulations to all the winners. And we will be getting in contact with you. Any further comments?
Nope.
Nope. All right, next item, please.
Item three C, potential food drives.
So, we did want, we did have an idea. We had this around, I believe, last year too, that we did want to do a food drive.
Yes.
And we wanted to involve the schools.
Yeah.
So, I, I would love that idea because I think getting involved with the schools will also put our word out there and get kids now to be more involved. So I definitely think the food drive would be a good idea.
I know that, I think it was last year, I was in seventh grade, uh, I think. Okay, so I saw these like boxes around the school and stuff, and another, like, business, I'm gonna say, I can't remember what it was, but they did a food, food drive, and so we would just bring like cans and stuff to school of food, and then if we did donate, then we would get like prizes, like bracelets and stuff at the front desk or whatever. But, uh, it's, it's really nice that people would actually like, like to donate to people about food and stuff.
Yeah, I think the food drives are really helpful. It helps people who are in need of essential items like food to get them. Uh, canned foods, I think, are amazing. They taste amazing. And they're really helpful for like, in the colder months, you can just grab them. Real easy. They're really easy to heat up. I think it'd help a lot of people.
Um, I was gonna say, I think using the schools would be a good idea because, I mean, like, everyone usually goes to school and stuff. I was wanting to know, um, maybe we could talk about it at a study session, where you guys would want to donate to the potential like items to, and how would you guys want to, um, share the information through the schools, like posters, or what other ideas did you guys have?
We, okay, so at the eighth grade, we have like this like morning meeting, I'm gonna say, or whatever, but, um, we all meet in the gym, and so I was maybe thinking that like, we could just say it to everybody and then just put up posters if people weren't there or whatever, and then just put up boxes and stuff, so people could put the food in also.
I think we should also do something outside the schools, so, like, people who don't have kids can also donate.
Yeah.
Cuz I feel like we'll get a lot more if we do it through the schools and like, have like a designated spot where we have people drop them off.
And also for the people that, you know, can't always get the food to the schools and stuff, then also have a second option for that.
Yeah.
Um, and then going back on to how we get it out, social media is a very powerful thing nowadays, so that would be a very strong source.
Put it on our social media.
Yeah, and then posters. I also, cuz me personally, when I'm walking in the halls, that's all I'm reading. I'm reading the posters on the wall.
Yes, the posters are very-
Very eye-catching.
Yes, so maybe something bright and colorful.
Yeah.
Um, we would also need to probably talk to the schools about it, get that put out there.
Principals and stuff.
And it's a lot to talk about, so I think it's best that maybe we should have a study session just to kind of get have that time to sit down and plan everything out, so we can have a clear idea of what we want to do.
Yes.
I feel like we should do a study session, like, to where the public can come out and say their opinions on how they feel about it.
Like an open study session?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to do that? Okay.
I believe we are. We will get the answer for you, just to make sure.
Okay.
Yep.
So if, do you guys want to have a study session?
Yes.
So, is there a motion?
I,
I moved to motion for a study session.
I second that.
If you please start vote.
Wellington?
Yes.
Holtz. Mosley? Yes. Lemunyan?
Yes.
Mosley?
Yes.
Study session has been set.
So we'll get everything figured out about that, um, but I think this will be a really great opportunity for us, and we will be having more information out to you guys about what we're gonna do, and we'll definitely come back with all that.
Have more information next meeting.
Um, any further comments? Okay, next item, please.
Item three D, upcoming events.
So one of the upcoming events is that our Youth City Council applications are opening sometime in mid-September. So if you have nothing to do, or if you want a leadership opportunity, um, definitely come up, step up. It's very fun being on the council, and I definitely suggest it to any kids out there, even if you're scared. Um, I didn't have that problem, but if you do-
Just say.
If you do have that problem, it's a great time to kind of get out of your comfort zone, and it's really not that scary. It's so much fun.
I think seeing new faces will be really nice. New people coming to the council is really exciting. Especially, um, when you, like, literally have no idea about who they are. It's really fun to know, and also it's really nice to have different ideas come from the youth and not just from us, like, I know I've been here for like two years or so, and I feel like we need some new ideas to help us.
We're a little rusty.
Um, I was also going to say that, um, if you are thinking about applying to be on the council, that you should definitely come to a couple meetings because obviously it's always a fun time, and even if you don't want to like apply, still just come to the meetings. It's a great, like, it's helped me with my speaking skills. It's got me involved in the community. So if that's anything anybody is interested in, you should definitely come out.
Yes, I agree with everything that everybody said. Um, and if you, you know, can't go out for, or if you just don't want to, um, please share it to your classmates and your, um, school friends and stuff, yes, um, because you may not be interested in it, but someone else may be. Also, it's for seventh through twelfth graders only. So, but if you're a sixth grader and you really wanted to do it, you'll always have next year or the next term.
You can also come to our meetings and talk to us about it.
Yes, if you have any ideas, you know, we do oral communications, so that's a great time if you need help with anything or anything like that, you can always just come out and speak to us.
I know when I first started, I really didn't like talking in public. I was very shy. But now, the further I get into doing stuff like this, especially with the U City Council, I've been able to talk more in public spaces, in bigger crowds, and it's really helped my confidence, kind of, with speaking.
I think like KK said, this is a great leadership opportunity. Uh, you can probably put this on your resumes, I'm pretty sure, yep. You can put this on your resumes, and, um, it's just a good community thing to do. And, um, it's nice to get to know new faces, and it's it's an opportunity to give your ideas, and we need new ideas. Like, not like we're not good or anything, but not saying that, but.
It'd be nice to see some fresh perspectives.
Yes.
Yes. Something new.
Any other upcoming events? I don't think so, other than more information to come about the-
Yeah.
Food drive.
Food drive, yeah, that's what it's called.
I think that's it.
Any further comments?
Nope.
Okay, next item, please.
Item four, closing remarks by Youth City Council members.
Um, I just want to say thank you guys for coming out or watching us. Please share everything about the school bonds, just everything we've talked about this meeting. Please share it to people because it's really important and it could change a s- uh, another student's life for the bonds, and another person's life for the food drives, and just all that stuff. Uh, I don't necessarily have an event, but my, I'm on our Hutchinson High School's freshman volleyball team, and we have a fundraiser. It is all digital, so if you would like to come, go and support your Hutchinson Suhawk volleyball teams, um, you can go to our Facebook pages and donate there. Um, I believe it's just called Suhawk Volleyball is what I believe the Facebook page is called, but if you can, please donate because we need new nets and new equipment, and it will really mean a lot to us, so if you can, please, um, go check up, go check out Suhawk Volleyball.
I would like to thank everybody that's been watching us live or in the future, and then everybody that's here in person. The high school is having our first scrimmage of the year tomorrow at seven PM at Gowan Stadium. I think it would be really nice to see some people out there. The band, the marching band, color guard, and the football team have been really practicing hard so far. And it's a really good way to kick off the school year.
Um, yeah, I also want to thank everyone for coming out. It's always a good time. And I was also gonna add on to what KK was saying, um, I'm also on the volleyball team, and, um, Um, it would really help if you could either, if you can't donate, um, share it with people you know. Um, it's posted on Facebook and Instagram, the players and the coaches have been posting it everywhere. So if you can donate, please do, but I also want to thank everyone watching online and everyone in person for coming out. And supporting us, so thank you.
Uh. I would also like to add on to what Maddie said. Uh, I'm also doing the blue and gold scrimmage. I'm doing cheer. Uh, there's a performance at six fifteen, right around in there. It's not an exact time, okay? Um, but the cheer squad is gonna do something. Can't tell you, it's confidential. But thank you for coming online or in person.
Yes, please go support your Hutchinson Sawhawks cuz I will also be at that event.
I think we all will be there.
Yes.
Yes.
We're either doing something with cheer or dance, color guard, band, whatever. We're, we try to be very involved, so.
Please come. Please come support us.
Please come out if you can support us. Um, I don't, do you know if it costs anything to get in?
I believe with a student, if you're a student, with your ID, you can get in for free if you bring your ID. Um, I think it's about seven dollars to go in.
That seems about right.
Without an ID.
Okay.
Or anything.
My coach said it didn't cost anything.
That's because you're in cheer Maggie.
I know.
Anyway. Um, thank you so much for coming out and being in person. Do we have any further comments?
No.
Nope.
Okay, next item please.
Adjournment.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I suck it that.
Okay, if we can, please start vote.
Wellington.
Yes.
Holtz. Mosley. Yes, Lemunian.
Yes.
Mosley.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.